It is 5:30. I'd like to call the special meeting to order. If you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone and welcome everyone who will be watching from home. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Present.
Trustee Gatt.
Present.
Trustee Kazayam.
Present.
Trustee Reichert.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
All right, welcome everyone. At our last regular meeting, Trustee DeVore asked that a special meeting be called to discuss finances, and I worked with her to word the agenda. It's worded how she wished, and that's what we'll do. We'll get into a discussion of finances. We will have a presentation by Administrator Sutton, followed by Stephanie Turner, and then I'd probably go to Trustee DeVore to start, and then all the rest of you. If you're able to hold your questions till we get finished, I would appreciate it, but if there's something you really need to know, jump right in. Right now, we would be at comments from the audience. If anyone is here tonight that would like to address the board, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. And just by the way, there's no action items tonight again. This is all just a discussion. Rob, are you coming up?
My name is Rob Stevenson. I live at 1505 East Glen, and I saw that the meeting was about finances, and I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. First being, I hope everybody saw in the Peoria Journal Star over the weekend, the article with regard to the pensions and how they are suffocating the Peoria budget. And I know last year in December, Kathy and I were here at the meeting where you guys authorized $454,000 for the firemen to be hired, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about that from the standpoint that that's the beginning. And we are a village that in 1990 had 6,800 people, and as of 2022, according to the Internet, we had closer to 5,800. So we've shrunk our population by about 16% over the course of that timeframe. And as these legacy costs continue to escalate, and if we continue to have fewer and fewer people, the burden will be dramatic over time. And it's not necessarily today. Apparently, you had 454,000 last year in the budget available to be utilized for it. But since you are talking about finances, I know that the real cost for six people, according to Chief Sutton, last year was, you know, anywhere from $650,000 to $750,000 for six full-time people, I think it was. And that's $100, $115 to $136 per person in the city of Peoria Heights. So again, just a baseline. This is obviously the first year you're doing it. The ship apparently has sailed, but I just want you to be cognizant that it's not necessarily today or tomorrow, but in years going forward, as evidenced by the legacy costs that the city of Peoria is trying to take on, it's very, very difficult. And I might be wrong about this, but Kathy and I did a quick back-of-the-envelope calculation with regard to how much of our tax dollars that go to the village of Peoria Heights, 80% of them currently go to pensions. So it just seems as though it's a sticky wicket, and I'd like you to give real close thought to that on a going-forward basis with regard to the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments still open. Any other comments from the audience? No one once? Twice? Comments from the audience are closed, so we'll get right into the discussion. Dustin, are you there?
I am, Mayor.
I'd like you to start out, and then we'll turn it over to Stephanie. Go right ahead, please.
Well, as you remember last meeting, the board requested a first-quarter update on finances, but also some statistics on what the next year and the year beyond that looked like. So Stephanie Turner and I worked on a presentation, which I'm going to have her take over here in a second, but wouldn't more than answer any questions you might have. But you should have gotten all the documents sent to you, at least if you had a chance to review them. But I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie now. Give me the questions for me, if I'm available.
Thank you, Chief. So I have, Sarah would have given the board a packet with each of the documents that was sent to the board yesterday. I do apologize that that was sent yesterday, but obviously, I've been working on this as much as I can.
Stephanie, just if I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I don't believe those are in the documents you are referring to are in the public packet, so for public consumption, could you please make sure that in your presentation, you go over all of that?
Yes, of course, Mayor. Thank you. So just to let the board know, this is kind of a high-level overview of the finances. I don't want to overwhelm you with details. If you have questions, obviously, please let me know. I'm happy to dive into deeper detail, but I'm going to kind of skim over the top since there is a lot to go over. First and foremost, I have for the board a financial analysis of the BDD. I think that when I present the Treasurers' Report every month, we all focus on that large number. When I read that the village-controlled accounts has over $8 million, it's easy to think that that is cash on hand that the village has available to spend, but I think it's important to note that approximately three-quarters of that figure is actually in restricted funds and has limitations on what it can be spent on. It can't be used for just the general operating expenses. So I'm focusing on the two largest restricted funds, which are the BDD and the TIF. They're where we tend to lean on for capital development, economic improvement, things like that, but they both have their own obligations and their own projects that they are working towards funding. On the first page, I have for you a review of the budget for this year, followed by a projection of where we, where I'm estimating we'll end up at the end of this fiscal year, as of right now, after the first quarter has been completed, and then continuing on into the following fiscal year and the year after that. So there are three years' worth of projections that are available to the board on this first sheet. This is all just, this is going to cover basically the projections that you'll see going forward. These are all based off of individual line items, me reviewing each line item, looking for one-time expenses to factor those out, looking into five-year historical trends to see how exactly we're doing in our own economy as opposed to, you know, the state or any other regions. I'm looking at our numbers and our numbers only. I'm also trying to factor in things I know about the businesses that have closed either recently or within these periods that I'm looking at, and things that have been replaced or are new businesses that might not be in those figures. So I have done my best to consider the whole picture, and then provided the board with a summary of what that picture looks like. You can see for the BDD on that first page, if you look down toward the bottom of it where it totals up the net income, the BDD has a pretty bright future ahead of it. We're looking at a $75,000 surplus at the end of this year, and the following year's a surplus of approximately $134,000, and then approximately $275,000. I have also provided the cash on hand, which if things do turn out as expected, then the board can anticipate that cash balance for the BDD fund will grow from approximately $1.5 million to $1.9 million at the end of this three-year period. So to offset that, I have on the next sheet a list of obligations, because while there would be too many in cash on hand, and that sounds like a nice big number to do projects, there are a lot of things that, a lot of infrastructure that needs to be replaced, improved, redesigned. There's a lot of projects that the board's currently working on, so I tried to summarize what is in those projections versus things that are currently pending and being discussed but have not yet reached a funding stage or are not quite ready to be included in these kinds of projections because they're outside the scope of the time period we're looking at. So things that are in these projections are the development agreements that we currently have signed. I've done my best to consider pending develop agreements as I am aware of them, but obviously, if they're not finalized, things can change.
For everyone in the audience, would you read those obligations, please, for the audience?
Yes, that's what, that's what these are. Are the development agreements. The BDD Improvement Grant for Businesses that the board approves every year, I have included additional funds for that every year. I have also included the split local match for Phase One of Prospect Engineering, which the board has approved. That split, that match is split. I call it a split local match because you're also going to see that come back up again in the TIF. There's a lot of, the TIF and the BDD are not perfect overlays of each other. They don't entirely match, but there's a lot of things that they do overlap on and they can work together on. So they are working together on the Prospect Phase One. It is also slated to help provide funds for the HUD Healthy Home Local Match that we will be working on this year. It also includes a portion of the cost for our Community Development Director. So all of those have been continued on in the next two years as well. The things that are kind of out in there, that are not included in these projections that I am aware of, that are pending projects that we need to address in the next five, possibly 10 years. So things that we're saving money for. The Monroe Phase One Engineering Local Match. I know that the Community Development Director, Wayne Aldrich, has been applying for federal, state grant funds in order to work on the Monroe redesign as well. Local match at this time is anticipated to be about $150,000. Could be more, but that's the current estimate. Addition to that, West, I'm calling it West Glen Avenue. What I mean by West Glen Avenue, it is the portion of Glen Avenue from Prospect to Knoxville. That portion of Glen needs to be milled and overlaid. Total cost is over $1.3 million for that project. Not all of that lays within the BDD and the TIF, so that project will require support from the MFT and the General Fund. The MFT, simply put, does not have sufficient funds to provide full support for that project. We will need general fund support in order to complete that project. Paris is in need of a sidewalk replacement, as well as Marietta. There are portions of the sidewalk in Marietta that are within the BDD and TIF, so that would be funded out of BDD and TIF when we get ready to do those projects, but they are not fully within the TIF, so that will also require some portion of general funds. These are projects, some of them, particularly the sidewalks, especially the Marietta sidewalk. We can break these down into, we can do a couple of blocks at a time, take it in chunks. It will cost more overall, but it does allow us to kind of work these projects into our budget a little bit more. The big thing at this point in time, the reason why I am looking to see BDD grow its fund and accumulate a healthy cash reserve, is that it's going to be needed to support the Prospect redevelopment and redesign, which is coming after Phase One. I think we've all talked about that. We're all aware of it. We don't know what the local match will be at this point in time. I think a very conservative estimate would be $2 million minimum. I have factored that into it, and this is why when I say we have 8 million cash on hand, we don't have it to spend, because if you add up all the pending obligations that I just spoke about for the BDD, you get a total of pending projects over $2 million. But at the end of three years, the cash on hand total is only 1.9. So these are projects that we are saving up for, that we are working on, but it doesn't mean that the cash that we have available today is really, the board can make the decisions and policy decisions to spend it however they want. I'm not trying to step on your toes for policy decisions, but there, these are the considerations that I have in the back of my mind when thinking about what are those funds for. So to move on, TIF, the next two pages are for TIF. You're going to find it's in a very similar position to the BDD, where things are looking well. We have surpluses projected for the next three years, $320,000 surplus for this year, almost 300 for the next year, and about 70,000 for the year after that. The TIF has obligations that are very similar to the BDD, but include the following. It includes the development agreements as well. It also has obligations to reimburse the school district for lost property taxes. It has the split local match we spoke about for Prospect that has already been approved. It is in the process of discussions for some redesign and development on Samuel Avenue. Those would be one-time costs, but there's a potential for the village to bond as part of those improvements. I have factored in kind of a worst-case scenario that includes bond payments, which is why you see that third-year drop, the surplus drop so much. And in addition to all of that, the TIF funds owe the General Fund approximately $625,000. This money is money that was incurred early on in the TIFs when they did not have funds to pay for themselves, so startup costs, the first several years as they were building and growing. They have, at this point in time, taken over the day-to-day expenses that they incur, but they still owe for years past when they did not have funds. There is a long-term plan to repay the General Fund, but it's being done slowly and cautiously so that we don't drain the TIF funds, because much like the BDD, they have a pending obligation list that the cost of it exceeds the available cash on hand at the end of the three years. So there are small repayments to the General Fund, which are being factored into both Just to share with the audience that is out there, pending obligation list includes support of the Monroe Engineer Local Match, which we discussed under the BDD, Millen Overlay of East Glen, which lays outside of the BDD districts but is within the TIF district, additional support for the Millen Overlay of West Glen, Millen Overlay of the Village Hall parking lot, as well as a repair to a Cyberlink sidewalk, which lays outside of the BDD but is within TIF district. It will also, it is at this time primarily gathering cash on hand and in support of the Prospect redevelopment. At the end of this particular list, we reach a pending cost obligation of $2.9 million with $2.1 million cash on hand at the end of the three-year period. So general fund analysis, this is the big one. There are a few caveats I want to discuss before we dive into this. I have to make certain assumptions in order to kind of continue on. Things that I assumed when I was doing these projections. I assumed that the board would want to continue to have the residents bear the cost of the garbage contract, so as that increased, I increased the receipts that we would see, receive from the garbage contract, or from the fees charged to the residents for the garbage contract, so that they would offset each other. I know that the board is aware that the grocery tax has been repealed, since the board has not had a chance to discuss, and I'm not sure, provide staff with direction on what to do about that. I have included the grocery tax receipts in here, but that is obviously up to board discretion. I have not factored grants into this after year '24-'25, because as of right now, all of our grants should end in '24-'25, the expenses and the reimbursements. The board did recently agree to provide a commitment for a grant application for Galena Road, $600,000. That is not in this budget projection, because right now, it looks like construction is going to start 2028, maybe 2027, but probably 2028, so it's outside the scope of what I'm And then on the expenses side of things, I have maintained services. So all of the services that you see now, all of the contracts, everything we are doing, I am making the assumption that we are going forward as we are today with services and everything we are providing. So with that, all that said, I am currently projecting at the end of this year that there will be a $212,000 deficit. I will get into a little bit more detail about that. That follows with next year coming with a $345,000 approximate thousand-dollar deficit, and the final year is about $486,000. Below that, you're going to see lines that have the cash balance as of May 1 and April 30th, much like I did on the other sheets, but you'll notice an additional line that I've put in here where it says GAAP Reserve Fund Balance. GAAP, or G-A-A-P, is the generally accepted accounting principle. And what the generally accepted accounting principle is for cash reserves is a minimum of two months' expenses. That being said, it varies based off of policy and location. Generally, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends a minimum of two months for state-level and large cities, places that have a diverse income and diverse revenues, that if something were to happen, they can pivot pretty quickly, they have other ways of making up for whatever has happened in their lost income. Considering that the village relies so heavily on income tax, or not income tax, but sales tax, I have projected that our GAAP should really actually be three months. The board might want to consider four months or longer, but I did not want to set that any higher without board direction. So I have assumed that the board would consider three months' minimum expenses as the safe cash reserve to have on hand. So the cash reserve, what does that mean? Basically, what that means is these are, these are funds that are kept on hand, are held relatively sacred as not spendable, so that if something happens, if, say, there is a large infrastructure failure, if perhaps the state has, have they had in the past, issues issuing payments on time to us. When I first started here, state income tax was approximately, I think, six months behind, and within a year and a half, they got to about three months behind, or they caught up a little bit. If at some point, something happens that our revenues are not coming in the way we anticipated, the GAAP Reserve Fund is there to help the board get over that period without having to look at raising taxes. It helps weather the storm. It's your emergency fund. There is a line underneath the GAAP where I have deducted out that, those cash reserves, so that the board has a better idea of what cash on hand is actually spendable. So while we would start this fiscal year with $2.7 million cash on hand, the GAAP would be about 1.4, and available for spending is 1.3. So what you see happening here is as these three years progress, we go from approximately $1.4 million in available cash on hand to spend on deficits, to spend on whatever the board decides, until we reach a point at the end of the three years where there's approximately $125,000 cash on hand to spend on deficits or whatever comes up that is I am going to skip the next sheet temporarily, the one that discusses the fire department expenses, and I'm going to come back to that in a minute. I just want to continue on to page three, which discusses the obligations and the pending obligations that were part of these calculations. So things that I have considered in these projections, I have considered that we would have 28 full-time employees. That's two admin, two housing, three public work employees, four full-time fire employees, and seven full-time police employees. There's also an addition of eight seasonal part-time employees, as well as the volunteer firefighters and the stipends that we are currently paying. I've concluded the expenses for the Community Development Director. I've maintained the general service levels and expenses that we currently have, so things would continue on as they do right now.
Stephanie, sorry, 17, please.
17.
Yeah, you said seven. I didn't want to confuse anybody out there.
Thank you. Thank you for correcting me, Trustee Reichert. I really appreciate that.
Sorry, I just didn't want, I didn't want anybody to get confused.
Sorry, Chief. And then also, there's a line there just reminding the board that we are not considering any grant matches beyond '24-'25, because there are not any in this three-year period that would come up. So here we come to the pending obligation list, which is, to me, also a big part of this, because it's our future, it's what we need to consider. The village does have a capital improvement fund, which currently has $1.375 million in it. The projects that I am aware of for capital improvement, these are all projects that lie completely outside of the TIF districts and the BDD, so they will not be eligible for BDD and TIF funding, not without some finagling. It's not really possible. North Prospect, so from Kingman North, the road is in need of both a Millen Overlay, as well as a lot of work to the curbs and gutters and repairs to the sidewalk. That project's of $1.4 million. There are various sidewalk replacements around Peoria Heights. These are replacements, not additions. There are maintenance of the sidewalks that already exist. That's approximately three-quarters of a million dollars. I've already spoken about that West Glen would need support from the General Fund for its Millen Overlay. In addition to that, Lake Street is slated for a Millen Overlay, and it would cost about three-quarter of a million dollars, is the estimate. So there are more pending capital projects than there are capital improvement funds at this point in time. In addition to this, there are what I'm labeling as department projects. These are projects that, I'm not saying this is an exhaustive list, I have not, unfortunately not had the chance to sit down with the department heads to really speak to them about exactly what kind of are their delayed projects. I'm pulling this list from projects that I've heard discussed before the board, projects that I've spoken about to department heads as part of the budgeting process, things that I am aware of that have had to be delayed, cut, or generally put aside because of how we work our budget. These are all things, some of these are things that will change with time or priorities, but they're all things that need to happen at some point, and it's kind of representative of the type of list that we generally have on hand for the budgeting process. So this particular list includes replacing the concrete in front of the fire bay, radios for the fire department, which I am aware that they are seeking grant funding for, replacement of the fire command vehicle, which is nearly 10 years old, I think it's nine, replacement of a fire engine, which I have put at $1.5 million in this list. It could be up to $2 million, and I am aware that Chief Decker has spoken about the possibility of a used vehicle, which would reduce those costs. Resurfacing the police parking lot, replacing and refinishing the drainage at PD to redirect it away from the building's foundation, replacement of two stoplights, and replacing a public works pickup truck and bucket, and the buck-up truck, as well as replacing the holiday decorations, which I know the board spoke about at the last budget. All told, between both the pending obligations and this list of delayed or pending department projects, the pending obligations are about $5 million. So I'm going to go back to page two and briefly talk about the department fire expenses. I was asked to look at the increase in the fire department's spending over the last nine months, and that is the first section. The easiest way to do that that I could consider was to look at the last nine months' spending in comparison to the same time period a year ago. Obviously, I reviewed each line item for any one-offs, things that would be, that wouldn't be reoccurring, or that would just not be a normal expense, pulled those all out. The difference between those two years, after adjusting for anything odd, is approximately The difference between those two years after adjusting for anything odd is approximately $293,000. To put that in context, below that, I then detailed out what are the kinds of things that are increasing expenses, and then annualized it so that when the board discussed things, they would have an annualized cost to look at, so that they would know in relation to the actual year and all the rest of the figures, what does this mean over the course of a year. The main things that are costing are going to be the full-time fire chief's salary and benefits, the increase, the onset of the shift stipend for the volunteers, and then there was an additional increase to that stipend. Operating costs for medical supplies, medications themselves, oxygen have increased, fuel costs have increased, and I did look at volume used versus the cost to kind of try to acknowledge and balance that gas prices aren't always the same. The maintenance of the vehicles has increased. Some of that could be timing, but there is also the fact that staff, well, not staff, but the volunteers are here more regularly, does mean that things are noticed more, that they're noticed earlier. So there is going to be an increased cost of maintenance. Equipment increase, there's more equipment needs now that people are here more often. Office costs minimally, obviously, but training has been a big increase. And then I did include also, the last three lines are not in the fire department budget, they're actually in administration, since administration carries a lot of the general village costs, but I just wanted to make the board aware that workers' comp insurance is actually based off of the amount paid for people who are working. So not only did it increase from payroll, but they also provide workers' comp insurance, even though they're not workers, they provide that for the volunteers, so they factor in the stipends that are paid to the volunteers as part of the premium that we pay towards workers' comp insurance. So those costs have increased, and additionally, so have legal fees, both ongoing in terms of questions about policies, about employment, questions, things that, I looked at each line and not just looked at it in terms of, okay, this is a question that came up because of the creation of the Fire and Police Commission, but is this a question that I could see coming up in any given year? So if it was a subject that was more about the hiring of employees as opposed to a specific question about creating and how to go about establishing that board to hire employees, I put the cost under the ongoing, which we can see, expect to see carrying on into future years, versus the last line, which is more of a one-time expense that will decrease over time as the fire commission is more established. If you do actually add up all those annualized numbers, they approximately add up to, I believe it's about $400,000, which is about the annualized increase in costs for the fire department. Trustee DeBoer?
I have a couple of questions on things you said that I need clarification on, if you don't mind first.
Okay, yeah.
In the general fund analysis, you said you, tell me what you did with the grocery tax again?
Yes, so the grocery taxes are peeled as of January 1st, 2026, which means that it will hit our books approximately May 2026, a little bit in April, mostly in May. I have left the grocery tax intact in this projection, since I am not sure.
Assuming that we would potentially pass.
Correct.
One second, I need to make a note on that.
That's fine, I needed a drink, so thank you.
On the TIF financial analysis, under the obligations, we have a school district loss of reimbursement. Can you explain that to me?
Yes, so this started when the, they first set up the TIFs. The village reimbursed the school district a portion of the property tax received in order to compensate for any lost revenues they might have because of the TIF setting the EAV basically back at what it was when it first started for other taxing bodies. That has been included and expanded on for each TIF district that we've added on since then.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. And then under the BDD financial analysis, the obligation, so could you just, I mean, maybe this goes for all of them, can you tell me which numbers you use to project development agreements? Like, how much of this number is actual development agreements?
So, to give you an idea, I mean, obviously, the development agreements are available, I can't talk about sales tax.
Sure.
You know what I'm going to say. But to give you, to answer your question and give you something to look at, if you look at the 6,800 line that says transfers, that's primarily where I make the transfers out of the BDD that are related to any sort of economic development agreement, and you'll see that carry over to the TIF as well. So to give you an idea.
How much did?
Of approximately $562,000 in fiscal year '26, '27 in revenues, we would be transferring approximately $113,000 to economic development agreements.
Okay, and then I saw, based on our budget, the BDD improvement grant businesses, we're budgeting that at around $30,000, is that correct?
It is a little higher than that, I've split it across a couple of different lines. I think that the current year is either 75 or 85,000. I did increase this, that from, it was a little smaller this year, we tend to go for 100,000. And I did increase in year '25, '26, and '26, '27, back up to 100,000.
Okay, and then, can you tell me also, how much were, how much was, how much did we approve for the HUD Healthy Homes match?
75,000. And also, this is something that caught my eye when I was going through, so I'm just going to tell the board in case this preemptively answers the question. On the general fund financial analysis, if you're looking at the operating costs, you might notice that in year '24, '25, it goes from 900,000, drops down to 737,000, before going back to 784. The reason that drops so much is because the majority of our grants in this year are in that category, and so they're, they're working their way off. Once we go back to a normal year, it's closer to 737.
I'd just like to make a comment, under the general fund financial analysis, under obligations, I don't see a salary of an employee to manage the grant funds for water, which we receive, so I think that's something that we might, if I'm not, if I'm not.
Yeah, so, no, there is nothing factored into this about a salary to manage water funds or water grants, that is something. Yes, that is something that could be taken on by the general fund or the water.
Okay, okay.
Unless the board has additional questions.
Those are, I'm sorry, those are all my questions on the analysis, I don't know if anyone else has any before we move on.
And obviously, I am happy to answer questions as you continue your discussion.
Clerk Turner, the grocery tax, I also had a question, like trustee DeBoer, so the assumption is, is that we pass locally after the expiration of the statewide grocery tax, the expectation is, based on your calculations?
The calculations contain an assumption that the board will pass a continuation.
And does your assumption also incorporate that save a lot will also be there as well?
Yes, it does.
Anyone else?
Clerk Turner, looking at the general fund, shortfalls, or kind of as we see it go down, I just did some, and I was, I never got the job at NASA, so I'm not a math major here, but it looks like year over year, from fiscal year '24 to '25, we're seeing a decrease of 61.6%, and then from '25 to '26 to '26, '27, we see a decrease of 70.1%. So these numbers are moving quickly and moving larger year over year, is that, is that correct? I mean, just want to check my math.
I'm not sure about the percentages, but what I can tell you is that the deficit is increasing, and it is increasing, not at a steady pace, it's increasing faster. We've talked about before about reoccurring expenses, and reoccurring expenses can have a way of growing faster, and that's kind of what you're seeing here. There's some other factors, so I don't want to reduce it to anything too simple, but that's part of what's happening.
Trustee Wiggington, can you pull your microphone now?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, you're just hard to hear for me.
It's a new one, okay. And in your BDD, TIF, general fund analysis?
Yes.
It looks like you assume that after Phase 1, say of Prospect, we proceed with Phase 2.
So I'm anticipating that Phase, Phase 2, I expect to come in, at the absolute earliest in year '27, '28, I'm not even convinced it would be that early. So I do have it in the pending obligation list, but there are no actual monies or funds that are listed in here that would be part of that.
And that's with Prospect, or, you're referring to specifically Prospect?
I'm referring specifically to Prospect, and then as to, like Monroe, Lake, any of the other streets, we've talked about redevelopment and redesign of, none of those are in here either, because I anticipate that the board is going to concentrate probably primarily on Prospect and begin those later on.
And clerk Turner, one thing that you had said is that you, for the next few years, there are no other, no grant matching in this timeframe.
Correct.
So my concern is, what happens when there is? Because we get these grants, I know chief and, you know, various departments will reach out trying to get additional money for funding for various projects. We're not anticipating that we'll apply for any more?
It's not that, trustee Wiggington, it's more that when looking into the future this far, we have, it's good to have those obligations in mind, because those become kind of your guiding star, those are the things that you look to, but you're, every year, it's a conversation, chief Sutton sits down with me, obviously, at the beginning of the budget process, and we start looking at what is coming in the immediate future, what's coming in the immediate year. So for me to sit here now in August of '24 and try to predict what grants we're going to have in 2026 is, I would not be successful. But what we can do in the spring of 2025, 2026, when we're starting that budgeting process for the following year, we can start reprioritizing, reallocating, and also, there's going to be changes. The board is going to make changes and decisions in the coming year that will completely change. These projections are good for now, as long as the board keeps everything the exact same. The second we change anything, the second there's something unexpected, these are going to be completely different. So that's why we sit down every year with the budgeting process, and we reexamine the immediate future.
And I understand, when you say these projections are good, you don't mean that they're sound in the black?
Yeah.
They're just good as you present them today?
I can tell by your face, you understand what I'm trying to say. If you come to me in two years and ask, are these right? No, they won't be right, but they give you an idea of where we're headed right now.
So when we see TIF obligations outpacing TIF revenue by over $800,000, where does, where do we, where do we find that?
Where do we find the $800,000? It's going to be a process of prioritization, determining which projects come first. So it's going to be a process, part of this is going to be going hand-in-hand with the Community Development Director and the grant manager for the water projects, because the Lake Avenue millon overlay that's on there, a large part of the reason that's on there is the street needs it, but also, we're going to open it up to replace a water main, so we might as well do the roadwork at that time and save ourselves some, some costs. So it becomes an ever-ongoing conversation, looking at what are, what are the immediate things that we have in our future, so that we can allocate funding to those. And then as time goes on, you work on the projects you can, work on them in chunks, like the sidewalk that we talked about, and you adapt to what funds are available.
Thank you, clerk Turner.
Okay, good, I wasn't sure if I'd given you the, good.
As far as grants, that's primarily what cardinal infrastructure does for us, making us aware when there's pots of money available, then Wayne is aware of that, and Wayne and Mike are very aggressive in submitting grant applications when those arise, and that's why we have a good relationship with both our federal and state officials too, when federal and state monies become available, but you just never know.
Well, and my concern, mayor, is that if we get those grants, they do come along with matching requirements, and I just don't see how we do that.
I was understanding what you were asking is this, you don't want to abandon the pursuit of, you know, seeking grants because we know we can't afford to pay the match, is that what I, that way?
Let me provide something that will be possibly a little less vague and maybe a little more comforting. The pursuit of grants is incredibly important, because how do we make up that $800,000 that we don't have right now? The pursuit of grants, in the short term, we have to find the money, but in the long term, we saved whatever we got in the grant money, which then can be applied to future projects. It also goes back to the importance of the cash on hand that I spoke about, particularly for the general fund, because how can we fund grant matches? By maintaining a healthy cash on hand, so that if we do get grants, we have that cash on hand in order to provide the local match in the short term, while we work on the long term, getting that money back in other ways.
And I think you summed it up quite well, when you said, "We pursue, but we prioritize." So you have to prioritize in a timeline what you want to accomplish, and a good example is the recent million dollars that Congressman Sorensen obtained for the village, and a lot of people ask, well, why can't you spend that million on something else? Well, it's specific for water main replacement, but why there was a sense of urgency around that grant is because of the upcoming construction on Route 29, so it doesn't make sense to do the construction, then the village go in and tear the road back up. So that's why that was prioritized and moved forward. So those are always moving parts, and sometimes, again, that money became available after the last Congress was elected, and they made these, what used to be called.
Pork?
Yes, my, air marks, thank you, that's what I was looking for. So the new Congress decided to have those air marks, and we were competitive and received that money, but you can't even predict, you know, what Congress and Springfield are going to do in the future when it comes to making monies available. Wayne, I'm looking at you, is there anything you want to add on the, you're managing, you're managing Monroe, you're managing Prospect, you're managing Route 29, and you're the point person on it?
Yeah, just in note of strategy or what we're doing, kind of, and this could inform you a little bit, and you may disagree with it, but, you know, we talked about Monroe. So Monroe, we were rejected for a reconnecting communities grant, federal grant, very competitive. When we debriefed with the USDOT, our scores weren't as well as I thought they would be, although we, you know, they said, great project, et cetera, et cetera, it's just not as, you know, it's a local road, you know, so it didn't have the pizzazz that a lot of projects would have. So, you know, Mike and I talked, and it's like, well, should that, is that worth the effort? Should we kind of regroup on a project like that? So that, you know, that being said, that's where we're at. You know, let's regroup on Monroe, it's an attractive project for the village, it really serves the neighborhood, but let's kind of think again about funding sources, because applying for a federal grant is not easy, and knowing where we scored, we were quite a ways away from getting, you know, to the secretary's desk, so that's a project we would reprioritize. We talked about Prospect Road. Prospect Road, in my opinion, unless you tell me different, is a priority. So it's probably the top priority for funding as well as far as a capital project. So the strategy there is, we got the funding for Phase 1, which is required of any federal project, you got to do a Phase 1 or a state project. So to get that money, the big money, you got to get the Phase 1 done. And then if the administration doesn't change our priorities. And then if the administration doesn't change our priorities, I'm talking about federal administration, after we complete Phase One, we have Phase Two, which is the detailed design, the plans, specification, and then Phase Three, which is construction. So Clerk Turner talked about, you know, $10 million, could be more, depending on what we do, and then Peoria might be involved with that, too, because a large portion of what we're studying is, is in the city. So those conversations continue. Right now, there is a grant that could be applied for a project like that, it's called a RACE grant, every administration for the past 15 years has had some grant program like that, federal grant program. So our strategy, again, is we got Phase One done, and a lot of these projects don't have Phase One done. So we got our foot in the door at the feds. You know, we said, you're spending federal money on this project already, do you want to just have us quit, or you want to give us more money? So that's going to be our strategy for a RACE grant, or whatever it becomes if the administration changes and they don't take it away. So I think that'll be a great project for that type of funding, it has everything needed. So that's the strategy for, how do we fund that match? Clerk Turner and I have talked a little bit, as well as Chief Sutton about this a little bit. So, you know, we have in the future, it's, it's not a bad word, it's bonding, you know? It's, it's something that, you know, you got to have, be able to do that, you got to be positioned to do that. And in my opinion, working in municipal government for about 30 years, you may have to get help with it, either from Steve Klein's group or another funding consultant. When you get to that point, you say, here's where we're at, what do you think? You're bringing a third party in to say, here's what we think, you can bond for this, and here's the bonding strategy, here's how that kind of looks. So that's, one project, I think, is important enough to get, if we got a big RACE grant to get matching funds, is potentially a bond, unless something else kind of breaks, breaks free. So again, Prospect Road, a big capital priority project. The other two, one is Glen Avenue. Glen Avenue is a major roadway that we have. It's not a state road, it's, and it probably wouldn't get traditional federal funding, but we can get federal funding through regional planning. Regional planning gets money through the feds and state every year, so I think that project will be very competitive for that type of funding. So we'll keep our eyes out on that type of funding. You might recall, we did apply for some ADA handicap ramps for that project through that funding source. So it may be in bits and pieces, but that, that's what we're pursuing, if there is federal funding that just applies to that type of roadway. Again, it's not, not a great project for the big federal grants, but federal money through regional planning would be a good source for that, and that's what we're pursuing on that roadway. And it's, it's not probably a total reconstruction, it's probably a mill and resurface with sidewalk work and handicap ramp work, and some bike enhancements, that type of thing. The other project, as you're well aware, is Route 29 Glen Road. It's a state project, so 80-plus million in state program funds going for that, and then we will, you know, right now, we're applying for the ITEP grant for the lighting and for some other kind of trail enhancements out there. So that, there's federal funding available for that, but ITEP is a really great funding source, that's federal and state funds through, through the state, so, and in this case, I think IDOT will support us. The Phase One is nearing completion towards the end of the year, done by IDOT, so we kind of piggyback on, on all their work. So hopefully, we'll be successful for that. The other thing I need to say, I will talk about water a little bit, but I certainly encourage, and when I came to the village, I was a little bit surprised you don't have, I mean, there's a capital fund, but it doesn't fund what I would consider traditional funds for municipal projects. Sidewalks certainly are included, but the other thing that's not included in a standardized way is resurfacing, mill and resurfacing. We, we add projects where we can, but I would always encourage, you know, that actually almost be a separate funding, Streets Fund, or whatever you want to call it, to fund those types of projects. So, you know, anything you can do, in my opinion, I'm offering this as an opinion, is to try to get, beef up that capital fund. So these are projects the village would attack individually, but, but a little bit more substantial projects. Right now, we do some seal coat projects, things like that. That, to me, you know, I hate to use the word Band-Aid, but it's kind of a Band-Aid. If you don't stay up on those roads, you know, the base falls apart, and you've got a bigger project all of a sudden. So especially on, again, roads, major roads like Glen and Monroe, potentially, local roads not as important, they just don't carry the same traffic. So the other strategy is the water fund. So water fund is, is a enterprise fund, I call it enterprise fund, it, you know, is supported by fees and can be supported by general fund and some other things. So that, the strategy at this point is try to engage, you know, a consultant like Woodard and Curran, I'm expecting a proposal from them to help manage that project. So Superintendent Chandler and perhaps me, even in the future, I may not be here, so, or we may not be here, so, but, but to get a consultant that's more managing the projects and assisting with financial strategy, that type of thing, as well as putting contracts out, things like that, looking for grants for the water fund, not to say, again, that there wouldn't be bonds that have to be issued. And in that case, that could be supported with the, you know, the water fund through fees or whatever, but it's, it's just another source. So that would be the strategy for water. I think that's generally it, but I'm, you know, I'm, you're, I'm speaking from a public works standpoint, I know you have other things to consider, but those are kind of our strategies at this point, and priorities for public works and water fund.
You offer up bonds as a possible solution, but the bankers and the bond council are going to want to see a revenue stream, designated revenue stream ahead of time, correct?
Yes. Yeah, so generally, you have to be pretty healthy in your general fund or, you know, your enterprise fund to support those.
Which, to build off of that a little bit, I know the obligation list is daunting, but I would like to point out to the board that these are one-time expenses. The true concern that I have about what the deficit and the way that it is increasing is reoccurring costs, things that we're taking on that will perpetuate not just this year, but year after year after year into the future, that will grow. Those are the kinds of things that are really feeding a deficit that large that will have to be looked at and considered.
Director Aldrich, so the RACE grant that you mentioned, does that typically have a match?
Yes. Yeah, it's usually an 80/20 match.
80/20?
But it's the big, it's the big money. I call it the big money.
So?
Get 10, 10 million plus.
10 million, but you would owe 20% of that.
Yeah. So that's, that's a big number for the village, so that's where I thought maybe we would have to bond for a match on something like that.
Now, if we got RACE grant, that would be Phase Two?
It, yeah, I think it could be for Phase Two and Three, that's where, that's our goal. So in Phase One, I think we have, I think it's five applications, it's three or five applications we actually included in the scope of work, too, for assistance with that grant application. So Handsome Professional Services has grant writers working with us, working with Cardinal Infrastructure, I think we would have a good chance for that grant, so that's our goal.
Wayne, would you, would you agree that once you receive Phase One, state or federal money, that it's rare that you don't receive Phase Two money?
In my experience, yes, and that's, that's been a strategy for us when I was at the town of Normal, too. That's what we did, we're successful twice with these big federal grants, because in Normal's case, we paid for Phase One. We said, well, we can afford to get Phase One done, but that's a good thing to get done, so you're ready for to spend the other federal funds. So in this case, we got really fortunate, got an earmark from the Congressman.
So if, I want to just say hypothetically, and I'm not, I'm not questioning that Prospect is a priority, but let's say we have a reality of financial shortfall, and we are not prepared to bond, and we're not prepared to tax, so what are the ramifications of us walking away after Phase One?
Well, I think you know, it's, it means your infrastructure is in a state of decline, which it is now. You know that as far as water, and it's the same for streets. So you're fortunate you don't have the sanitary sewer obligation there, but, which would be huge. But, but your streets, like I said, I mean, they're falling apart now, and, and of course, your major streets like Prospect and Glen, and, you know, they're, they're going to be the priorities, because, you know, they, they, you know, take more traffic and take more abuse. So that would be the thing, you know, if you didn't support that, you know, you're not supporting economic development at the same time, so that's a, that's something that provides general sales tax as well, you know, kind of indirectly, but your roads have fallen apart, your water is not sufficient, so that's the ramifications. And it's, and it's in a system that, you know, may have not been maintained for years to the extent it should have been.
Thank you. Is that your record?
Um, for general fund, financial analysis under financial projections, can you define for me what other agencies would be? So it's 4,400. So you have us for 2024, 288,000 annual budget, end of this year, 365, but by 2020, 2026, you have us down 121,000?
Oh, yes, so that is where the offset, the revenues come in for the grants, so you're seeing?
The grants come in to the revenue side.
And then set the expenses down in the 20, or the 6,200, like I talked about.
Okay, so it's the same, basically the same. Okay, so then what is other income?
Other income, okay, so this includes things like miscellaneous income, miscellaneous reimbursements, the big thing that is in there is the waste disposal fees. So I'd say a solid 75% of that money, more than, yeah, about 75% of that is actually the waste disposal.
Okay.
Interest is in there as well, which I will note to the board, I tried to be conservative about interest, and then right after I finished this, I saw on the news that it is rumored that the feds will be cutting the interest rates in September, so I don't think I was conservative enough.
I think we know how critical interest rates can be, since we refinanced some bonds about a year ago and saved, I think it was 300 and some thousand just by refinancing, so interest is really important.
Yes.
And Clerk Turner, the personal replacement tax, you're assuming that Springfield keeps it the same?
It took a hard dive this year, so when I did the projections for that, I pulled it way back. I kept it low, which it is this year, with modest increase, I think I did a 3% or 2% for it, I mean, I did very modest increases. Typically, what I see with the personal property replacement tax is it goes in about a two-year cycle, it grows, and then it dips, and then it grows back, because there tends to be a pushback from local communities on when the state does start using that for other things, when it goes down, there tends to be a pushback where it grows back up. So the modest increase was kind of my way of acknowledging that it's dipping, but it's probably going to rebound by the third year.
Okay.
We can hope.
Thank you.
So there's, there's a good possibility in your estimates for 2026 that that 121 could go up, based on grants that we?
If we receive grants, I would expect that to go up, but I also expect there to be offsetting costs.
Okay.
So that's, that's kind of the?
The balance?
Yeah, the balance is, I didn't include the grants, but I also didn't include the grant expenses.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, I guess we'll bring this to a close. It's not on the order of business, but if anyone in the audience would like to make any further comments to the board, you got five minutes, so reopen up comments. Anyone? Okay.
I thought we were just asking questions first, I wanted to like recap kind of like why I called this meeting, if you're okay with that?
Sure, yeah, go right there.
So, first of all, thank you to Clerk Turner for putting all this together in a short turnaround. I know she spent, gave up a lot of her free time to do this, and also field multiple phone calls for me and all of my questions, so thank you, Stephanie, for that.
Of course.
I think it's easy to sit here and make decisions on finances, but without seeing these analyses in front of us, it's kind of hard to wrap your head around all the decisions that you're making. I know that administration spends a lot of time in these numbers, and we don't, so I thought this was important for us to see what these analyses are, and to kind of see where we're going. Ultimately, I do feel that providing service is our job as this board, like provide service to the rest of residents, whether that be police, fire, water, you know, that, that is our first job. But since some of these things are such a balancing act, I find that we're in a really tight situation. We're in a tight situation on how do we provide all these things. With the state of our economy and the state of where our budget is, I just think that this is challenging. In your packet, I also had Wayne provide this sheet that it has like yellow marks, it's like highlighted in yellow. So these are the grants that we have already approved matches for, like we have all sat here and voted on them, and those are matched on those totals to one, just over 1.5 million dollars, we've already agreed to that money. I like the layout of this, because it was easy for me to kind of keep into perspective, like what we've already agreed to, and I do agree that if we're tearing up roads, we should be doing huge changes to the water infrastructure, as we know that that's something we have a huge problem with. I don't know the exact way to go about it, but I think that like, moving forward with our fire department, we're really at a pivotal point onto hiring these three employees. We've made great strides in the last nine months or so with the department, and I think in this fiscal year, by providing them a larger budget to work with, I think that's positive, right? We were asking them to create mountains with pennies, okay, we weren't giving them anything. So I by no means want to take away what we have already given the department as far as like where their budget is, but I think that we need to strongly consider maybe putting a pause onto hiring these three full-time firefighters, as the requirements to go along with that, as far as pension and all the benefits with it, really puts us in a dynamic situation. I do love that we have a fire chief, we have a deputy chief, or keep that position, that's something we're already paying for. We have stipend positions, and I don't know if we move forward and just try to fill these times with stipend positions and/or part-time positions as well as that, but keeping that budget a little closer to where it is now, where we're giving them around a million dollars. I just would like, I just would hate to see us dive into this, and then in two years, what you're seeing on these projections, we have to look at these people who we're supposedly providing their livelihood and lay them off because we can't afford to pay them, whether that's a firefighter, a police officer, someone in the street department, because I'm just afraid that that's, that's where we're headed. I do not want it to seem by any stretch, that means that I don't want to continue to see this fire department grow and have the support from this board, like we have been working on, I mean, really, the last six years, okay? So I do not want to take any kind of step back into not support them, but I just would hope that my fellow board could see that maybe we need to step into it a little slower, maybe we do a year or six months like this, reevaluate, have another situation, and then make a decision, can we afford to bring on one full-time person, can we bring on more part-time people, or more stipend positions? Like, I'm just a little concerned that, I do not want this village to go back to what it was eight years ago, where we were in a deficit, and we couldn't afford to pay our bills, and we were worried about how we were going to make payroll. So I, I just would like us to think about that, and maybe at our next meeting, make a determination if we would put a pause on the hiring of three positions, three full-time positions.
I, I'll go first.
I, I'll go first.
Go ahead.
Clerk Turner, if we eliminated the three upcoming positions for the fire department, what was that cost for those three positions? Do you remember? How would that affect our projections?
Would you mind continuing your discussion for about 10 minutes while I, I have my workstation and the spreadsheets ported into this laptop. If you would continue your discussion-
I'm just curious on what, how the projections would look if we dropped the three positions off?
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but-
We'll just, we'll pause for a minute, let you get that.
And then-
Sorry.
I agree, Trustee DeVore. We started down the road of full-time employees because half the board was concerned about response times, about people not being here, people not responding. Four minutes, four minutes, public safety, public safety, seconds matter. So my concern is if we go with the stipend positions, there are chances that there's going to be no one here. And that's not going to be the fault of the fire department. It's going to be by design of this village board. So I just want us to think about that when we consider these three positions, because the solution to the concerns relating to the response times and the lack of personnel was what Chief Decker has proposed, that guaranteed two people each shift, which is the bare minimum. So I don't necessarily disagree with what you'd said, Trustee DeVore. But I just want this board to know that in six months, when we get reports of missed calls and response times, that it's our fault, not the fire department's.
I, I agree with you. I do want to say that I did have a really long conversation, conversation with Chief Decker. He knew my thoughts and feelings on this, and he also shares that concern. I had told him, as well as I had told you, that I would reach out to counsel and ask questions about can we make requirements or suggest requirements, like we would love for you to be on our roster, but we ask that you work one holiday and one weekend or whatever. And that is within our legal right to request that over the stipend positions. I also, I don't want it to be held against them either if we do not fill those positions. I think I would like Chief Decker's, you know, thought process on if he feels that we do six part-time people and have a full list of rosters of people who are, take stipend shifts or a mix of both. I'm sure that, because then we just have a little bit more control of the schedule. I do know that the firefighters would love to have some of the benefits of being a part-time employee, for example, like having W2s instead of 1099s. And the reason I'm hesitant to request us moving to part-time firefighters is because that limits the amount of hours they can work. So right now, as a stipend shift, they can work as many stipend shifts as they want, and they actually can make really good money doing that. Whereas if we do, if we push the part-time to make sure the schedule is completely covered, they can only work a maximum of like 25, pushing maybe 30 hours a week, because then it will change the structure of like coverage that we have to have for them with insurance and things like that. So I like the idea of creating a policy that states we would love for you to, you know, to be on this department, but we ask if you, if you're going to take stipend shifts, these are the requirements that you would take them.
And what would we do if, you know, they decide that?
I mean, that's, that's something we're going to have. I would hate to make that policy decision because I feel like that's a policy that shouldn't really come from Chief Decker. But I mean, we could do like, you know, you get a warning or, you know, there's lots of options that I think that, that could really go down a rabbit hole of thinking of lots of different options for what we could do.
One of the things-
Chief, Chief-
Sorry.
Chief Decker, do you, would that discourage people from participating in the stipend shifts if they had some sort of requirement on how many they had to pick up?
I'm afraid so. I can't tell you for sure. We, we already have a problem filling all the shifts. Looking through today, just in the last month, we had eight shifts that went unfilled. Fortunately, one of, there was still one person there on each shift. But we've had shifts over the last couple of months that there were no members willing to fill the stipend positions.
Is that because of the time of the year, with it being summer and?
I don't know. So I, I don't believe so because if I look forward over the next, let's see, I don't know how many will end up being filled, but there are currently 15 open shifts in September. One of my biggest concerns is we have two members that work an awful lot. And I think it's, I'm sorry, in August through September, the two of them combined worked 29 shifts. One of them, I expect any day to hear that he's going to be a full-time police officer. The other person has recently interviewed with the full-time fire department. Those are my concerns. We are actively working on trying to grab more members. One of those people actually is scheduling currently with the Fire Science 110 class to, to go into ICC and speak with them about if they're willing to volunteer, please do it with us. I, someone else asked me recently about making mandates of, of someone to volunteer and, or, or to work stipends. That's my biggest concern because that's the, I guess, beauty about stipends, that you do them when you're able. And then when you're not, you don't pick them up. I'm not sure what would happen. It does cause me concern, but what I'm most fearful of, and we've had this, of when there are days that I know that no one's on the schedule or only one person is on the schedule, I keep the radio glued to me even though I'm at home or whatever, just to make sure that, my biggest fear is not that there's no one able to respond. I can deal with that. We can call mutual aid and get them there in a couple of minutes. My, my larger concern is if, let's say, I'll give you an example, three o'clock in the morning, don't hear that call. Dispatch procedures to wait five minutes, and that's a countywide procedure, tone out again, and then wait another five minutes. And then is when they can automatically go on a mutual aid. The reason that's a county rule is because some departments are such rural departments that they require that additional amount of time to be able to get to the station and go on the air. So we can make changes, but when you throw in the words automatic mutual aid, it's when it becomes a bit more hairy. One of the, Peoria Fire Department, for example, they make a practice not to agree to automatic mutual aid for various reasons. And I mean, I knew that when I was on the East Peoria Fire Department as well. We have departments surrounding that would be agreeable to automatic mutual aid, but they're quite a distance and it's, it's travel time through the community. I want you all to realize that I'm not offended by any of these questions at all. I can only give you the facts. And sitting on a board, I understand the financial concerns. I'll do anything I can to help you, give you any information that I can. I do lose sleep at night concerned that there's not going to be someone available and willing to respond to calls. We are keeping a very close eye on it. And I want to assure the public that there's never a moment goes by that I don't know who and if somebody is able to respond. But it's something that we keep an extremely close eye on. And as we have members that are gaining employment with full-time departments, that's going to become a large issue. We've had some great hires recently of members, some that are, are able to work remotely and they've chosen to do so at the firehouse. That's awesome. One in particular has been here the last couple of days and he's, he's run a bunch of calls with us. There's no schedule we can put him on, but man, that's tremendous. I-
Why, why can you not put him on a schedule?
Well, because he's technically working for his, his company. He's here doing it remotely, but his work provides some flexibility. So he doesn't have to be necessarily doing work at this time. He just has his work that he needs to get done. So if he comes up and happens to run a call or two through, through the shift, man, I told him today, I said, if you're willing to do that, let me know what you need and we'll make it work out because I'm encouraged by that.
Well, because most people's work schedules are eight to, eight to three or eight to four. And if he's willing to spend the evening for that 24-hour shift and, I mean, we'd be able to offer at least half of the stipend for him to be that person in the, in the evenings, right?
Well, I'm sorry, he's, he's doing that during the day. And the reason it works out great for him is because his wife works during the day. He's able to do some time during the evening, but not like he, I mean, and the great thing is he's found a love of it. And I, I think there are more people out there like him. Something that just started speaking with a number, another member today, found out that there are, I don't know if they're called incubator type facilities in other parts of the country that promote things like that. So it's certainly something to look into. I hate to, you know, keep throwing things to try to make it work, but like I said, I'm willing to do anything I can. I do have concern. And that's, the concern is the, when we have people that are unable or unwilling to respond. Also, not just, training was, was a big issue. State of Illinois has really increased requirements for someone to be able to enter a working structure fire, to be able to be counted as a member on a vehicle. And it's out of my control, but it has become very expensive. Training for each firefighter has become even more expensive, especially over the last four, five years.
And Chief Decker, I would like to just talk a little more about the stipends. Do a lot of the firefighters that take the stipend shift, do they have part-time or full-time jobs elsewhere?
I think most of our shifts that are covered, frankly, are covered by people that have part-time shifts elsewhere.
Okay.
There are a couple who have full-time jobs someplace else. And I think, which adds to my concern, when the day comes, when they have full-time employment, it will pull them away.
Is it correct to say that firefighting is a young man's job mostly?
You know?
There's a point to this.
No, well, I'll never admit it because I love it so much. But I will say, yes, there is a big difference. I still love going inside, but certainly easier when you're young.
Yeah, the reason I get that, the reason I said that is for the cultural differences. If you look at the statistics in the private sector on HR and hiring, those metrics, Gen Z and younger millennials, the main thing they look for is flexibility. So my concern is, not that I necessarily disagree with doing the stipends, but if we start mandating-
I wasn't saying something like extreme, like if you ask someone to work one holiday a year out of a list of holidays, I felt like that was fairly reasonable, right? Like one weekend shift a month, like that could be a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you know, day, night. I just didn't think that that was, I'm not saying ask someone to-
It could even be a higher stipend for working that holiday event.
Yeah.
I think, I think we're older millennials. So that's reasonable for us.
Okay.
But maybe I'm wrong. Hopefully I'm wrong.
Chief, do you feel like a higher stipend would increase, like, response to them?
Since we do have open shifts, I've already instituted double pay on stipends. We have plenty in the budget to do it because we've had enough open shifts that would cover it. Fourth of July is a perfect example. Still couldn't get somebody to cover. I think holidays like, we are fully covered on Labor Day coming up. I could imagine some would quickly choose some of the holidays. But then the more difficult ones, Christmas and Thanksgiving and Easter and things like that, that's where it could really, really become difficult. There, I can't remember if it's Thanksgiving or if it was Christmas, that I was here for a while just trying to make it work, make sure that there was coverage throughout the day. And it was a juggling act. We made it work. And the good thing about holidays, except for Fourth of July, good thing about holidays is often they are slower days. Fourth of July seems to be opposite, but it is usually.
Thanksgiving, you got to watch out for those turkey fryers.
Yes, you're absolutely right.
Chief Decker, how many current members of the fire department are Heights residents?
It is less than six.
How many are within Peoria and Peoria Heights, not across the river?
Oh.
Within, maybe I'd say, I'll give it a 10-minute response time from their home.
Oh, within 10 minutes? I'm going to, I'm going to guess here.
Yeah, that's fine. Did you say most of them?
Twelve or so. We've had a decrease in membership recently. We're expecting an increase. We have a couple of people going through the process, but-
How many calls have, without covered shifts, would you say that nobody showed up for when a call came in?
Unfortunately, quite a few. The, there is-
So who responded to them? If, if none of, if none of our volunteers showed up when the, when the pager went off, who showed up and, who showed up and did that? Or did we call for mutual aid? Or how did we, how did we handle that?
We all, we always can call for mutual aid. And we have, Peoria Fire Department will come anytime, have abundance of people. West Peoria and-
Right. But how, how many times have we had to call because nobody from our fire department has shown up for a call?
Well, before-
I have, I have a point, so.
Okay, no problem. Before I was here, between January and November, I believe there were 140 calls that no one answered up. Now, arguably, when those five-minute, or the five-minute period is over, dispatch can ask AMT, are they still needed? And they can say, no, they're fine. So they don't, they don't tone us out again.
Okay.
Since I've been here, there have been four times.
So in eight months, we've had four, four times where we have had nobody respond?
Correct.
Okay. My point is, is that for 125 years, we have been a volunteer fire department, where they have been local residents that have answered their pager in the middle of the night, in the middle of Christmas dinner, in the middle of Thanksgiving. That is what it means to be a firefighter, paid or not paid. And I have faith that our volunteer firefighters, even though they don't want to commit to 24 hours of sitting in the, in the bay, waiting for that possible call to go off, they'd rather go to their home and, and watch their kids open presents or eat their dinner, will respond to a call. Fourth of July, you said you didn't have anybody cover the shift, but we all know that there was at least four of you. There were two on the truck. I know you were there. I know Shock was there and a couple others that did respond to the call when the call went off, even though they were not being paid the stipend shift to be there. Am I right?
Structure fires are not the issue.
It's, it's the lift assist down at the-
Not just lift assist, chest pain. Ninety percent of our calls are not those. Ninety percent of our calls are the, like, for instance, someone altered level of consciousness, diabetic issue, things like that.
So my point being that maybe the issue isn't the stipend pay. Maybe it is what the volunteers get to even show up on Christmas morning to respond to somebody with chest pains, whatever they get. I know that there is a, there's a pot that it all comes out of based on an average of people. Maybe that's where we need to reassess, is, is, are they getting $13 to leave their family on Christmas morning to come handle me having chest pains? Or if we up that just a little bit, just to make it just a little bit worth, you know, it may sound stupid, but I mean, if nobody wants to take $600 a day, if I didn't have as many commitments as I did, for $600 a day, I'd become a volunteer firefighter at almost 40 years old.
What's $400 a day right now?
Sorry, 400, sorry. $400 a day to come do that. Because that's A, the way I was raised. But if I were a volunteer firefighter, had I, had I joined at a younger age in the way that I was raised, I would have, my father left every Christmas and came up here. My, my uncles, my, you know, my dad's best friends, they were all volunteer firefighters within the community, would leave their families on Christmas. And I'm fairly certain that most of our volunteer firefighters now would do the same if that pager went off, regardless of, of what the circumstances are, whether it be one or two or 10.
Well, I respectfully disagree because that's not what I'm seeing. The only ones, the, the calls that I'm having people come in for are the car accidents, the structure fires. And honestly, I would expect on that level to be the cardiac arrest, the overdoses. But I'm not even seeing, we've had multiple cardiac arrests recently, a couple of overdoses, that we got no one who came in on a subsequent call.
But you, you just said over the last eight months, you've only had four times that that has happened.
But what I'm talking about, we've had the stipend shifts. So they can still come in and respond to calls, they just haven't. So to answer that, like how many haven't responded? Oh my, probably 98% of them.
But we had stipend, stipend people.
Correct.
So I guess my point is, is that if we have two stipend people there and the volunteers don't come, that's because they know that the stipend position isn't being filled. But if you say, hey, guys, just heads up, we don't have anybody filling these couple- we don't have anybody filling these couple of days, so keep your stuff handy that maybe you can drop in and give us a hand, they're not going to get the stipend pay, but they also can enjoy their day until there's a phone, until there's a pager go off for a call.
Well, a few weeks ago, I knew that we had one person here. It's 11:30 at night or so, Sunday night, and I saw the, the call come in, knew, and it came in as a ground level fall. Wife could not get the person up off the floor. And I knew that he was here alone, and I knew how difficult that would be, so I responded from home. And probably took me, I don't know how long, to get there. But unfortunately, calls like that, even though they may not meet the, the criteria that would get people to come in, they're still serious to the person. And as I told the, the wife, I said, you know, we don't want you hurting yourself trying to get him up off the floor. So I got, I was here, able to help him up off the floor, and it worked well. Those are the ones I'm concerned about.
And as the chief, that is something that I would expect you to do. If you know the shift's not covered, and you know that there's not enough, that I would expect you as the chief to grab your radio and head to the call and make sure everything is, is fine. And I know what call actually you're referring to, because it was my neighborhood. And AMT was, I believe there was also a ambulance there as well, unless it was another ground level fall for a...
This is a different one, yes.
There was multiple.
Your call was on Marietta?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. There was another, there was another of the same call that I did watch, I did watch from my front porch to see how many people responded and things. And it, and it looked, it looked pretty well covered. But my, my point being is maybe the full-time people, hiring these full-time people and straining our budget leaves us no room for growth. And we need to have room to grow. And by starting, by upping the stipends, paying the volunteers more to come in, informing them, hey, there's nobody covering these 24-hour shifts, but, you know, keep your radios handy because we're going to need help if something comes in. I think we can count on these guys that they're going to show up. I, I just can't see them failing us like that, especially for as much as this community has gone to bat for them, to keep them, that I think that they would show up for their people. And that is something as, as their chief, something that you have to instill in them too, is that these guys went to bat to fight for you, to have this fire department and not get rid of it. So you need to show up for them, whether you're being paid to or not.
I can assure you, everything has been said to them. And, again, this, this doesn't offend or affect me. I can just tell you the truth. And what you're saying, although maybe, I, I love your daddy, he's a great guy, and I guarantee you, you are absolutely 100% correct. And I won't say that the members that are here now are any less dedicated. I think the problem is a national problem. We have a national issue with volunteerism. And that is because people, whether it be their economics or whatever, they don't have as much available time. So the volunteers that we have just don't have the available time to respond like we used to long ago.
Trustee Weisenberg, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I do have an answer for you, and I wanted to get that to you. Just for fiscal year '24, '25, so the partial year, it would reduce approximately $228,000. That does completely remove the deficit that I am currently projecting.
For '25, '24, what were your volunteer contributions? Because if we didn't have full-time staff, we'd have to bump up the...
For 20, so for '24, '25, I'm factoring in a full-time fire chief, I am factoring in the assistant fire chief through the projected hire date of three full-time firefighters. I'm projecting three full-time firefighters through the end of the fiscal year. I'm projecting a stipend of $400 per day. And I can't remember whether I did two through the full year or if I did them, if I cut it off in September basically, because we would be anticipating that one of the full-time people, I believe I cut it off because we were anticipating one full-time person would cover one seat, and then there would be a stipend of...
You did.
I did factor in some extra stipend shifts for PTO, for people not being able to make their full-time shift.
Right, so two stipend shifts a day at $800 a day.
Until the hiring of three people, then it goes down to one.
Right. But I'm saying if we get rid of the full-time positions, it's not like that money is saved, then, because the $800 a day times 365 days...
Okay, hold on, hold on.
...is just shy of $300,000 a year.
Benefits versus no benefits?
No, I understand that. I'm just, I'm curious to know how that affects the budget. And then we, why are you working on that? Then we get back to the economics, like you spoke to Chief Decker, and I wish our culture, our society was like it was 30 years ago or 60 years ago. The difference is, is both parents work. The economics, it's hard to survive out there, it's tough. And to expect people to show up and work and not be paid, I think is a thing of the past. And it has nothing to do with dedication. You can be as dedicated as you want, you've still got to pay that mortgage note, you've still got to keep your lights on, and that is extremely expensive. Everything has gone up. So I don't expect people to show up and not be paid, because they have families at home that they have to care for. If they're Heights citizens, they've got to put clothes on their children, they've got to, you know, pay for the after-school activities. I definitely do not expect people to show up and not be paid. So I would be curious to know what that stipend amount is, how it affects our budget.
Okay.
Like, if we dropped three positions, and we budgeted $300,000 a year for stipends, we'd probably want to put some cushion on that for the incentives to get people to, so let's say maybe $400,000 a year.
So I can tell you that when I was doing the projections, I did include cost increases to the stipend. I was assuming that similar to how salaries would increase, those stipends would increase over time. I am pulling up those exact numbers for you as we speak.
While you're looking for that, Clerk Turner, I want to say to Chief Decker, I appreciate your comments, and I don't want something that you said to get lost. You said prior to your arrival, we were missing, I think, was it 140, 170 somewhere?
That's, that's what I was told by Brandon Blaney, who runs dispatches, somewhere in the 140, I think he said 147.
Okay. And then you just said four since your arrival.
Yes, sir.
So I think when we look at what this board has asked of Chief Decker and the department, you can see it's night and day. So I appreciate your efforts, Chief. I don't want you to feel like that's being lost here. What you've done with the scenario you have found yourself and what you have done with the department, I think it's pretty much night and day, 147 to four.
Yeah, please don't, don't mistake what I'm saying even is...
I understand.
I mean, you really have. Some of the things that I look at when it comes to your budget, if we don't hire, we don't hire the three full-time employees, you have a little bit of a larger budget to work within this year to do some of the, even, even the improvements that you have wanted to do, to try to make it a safer, better, more updated place to work for the volunteers and even the stipend people. So, I mean, it opens the door for you as well to have a little creativity in how you want to run things, if we, if we're not up here stressed out about how we're going to, how we're going to have to tell you in three years, you're going to have to let these guys go, because we just could not afford that.
And Chief, I mean, Trustee Riker, Chief, sorry to interrupt. So what we're thinking is, we're missing four, we've missed four since your arrival. But we're pretty confident with the, with the addition of these three full-time firefighters, we won't miss any.
If we had three full-time firefighters, there would never be a missed call. And by, by missed call, that doesn't necessarily mean that they will handle it completely, or maybe they're on a call and another call comes in. But at least, there will be no gap in coverage. Because I guess the, the fear is that second call being a completely occluded airway obstruction. And they can immediately say, send me engine, whatever, close this engine, and get them there. And there's no gap.
Well, I think it's, I think it's pretty telling though, like, again, the talent that you've brought to this position, as well as you're attracting people, that we've gone from 147 to four, and now potentially we can work that down to zero. I think what we have to do, if you balance that, is, you know, where we are in the budget, and I, I agree with Trustee Weisenberg, we don't place that on what our policy decisions are, we don't place that on the, the fire department. It's not a reflection of the fire department, that's a reflection of what the black and white of the numbers allow us to do. So I, you know, I think that's, we have to live within whatever that is. But I don't think that places anything, the bullseye at all, on the fire department.
All right. I'm going to step in. This meeting is about finances, and I think everything comes under the umbrella of, of finances, as does this discussion. But it's evolved into fire, and I think in fairness to Chief Decker, we should give him time to prepare his own presentation and have answers for us. So I'm going to ask if you'd prepare a, are you able to attend Tuesday night's meeting?
Here, I think I'm on the honor flight next Tuesday.
Oh, that's, okay. Well, then we may have to have a special meeting. I think there's a sense of urgency around this. I thank Trustee DeVore for calling this meeting, because I think we all see the huge financial obligation of adding FTEs. But I do want to say that I know these suggestions to Chief Decker are well-intended. I've given him my own suggestions. But I think a best practice for a board is to tell department heads how much money you can spend, and let them decide what to do with that money, run their own department. I don't think we would tell Chief Sutton how to run the police department, or Chandler how to run public works. But again, I know it's well-intended, but we're constantly offering this chief suggestions. When we hired him, we told him to come in here and do a needs assessment of what's, what's needed, and we were going to back that up. We can and have the ability to determine how many FTEs we're going to have. We can set that number. So if the board chooses not to hire FTEs, that's your decision. But again, I know that this is a, a big problem. It was stated earlier about public safety, and I think that's our primary duty, is to provide public safety. And my concern's always been to make sure that when there's an emergency in this village, that we get personnel there as quick as possible. That's been my number-one priority. So I would ask us all to think about this. If you have questions, to work with Chief Decker, but try and identify a number I think that we can afford for a fire budget. So I guess that won't occur next Tuesday. Are there other dates that you might be available to do a meeting, or is...
Whenever you'd like me.
Counsel, I'm going to, I'm going to look at you. I know, I know there are board members who are concerned about hiring FTEs until we get through this financial piece. If we wait till the third Tuesday in September, is that time ticking? Or do you want to, you want to look into that?
I'm going to have to look into that, and I will.
So can I ask a follow-up question, ma'am?
Sure.
So we had given, in a previous meeting, we had approved the, the three full-time employees.
Yes.
And we gave him his budget, and he did what you just said he should do. And now, and now we're trying to reverse that, well, potentially reverse that. So I'm just a little confused on what Chief Decker should present to us, because...
Well, I heard a lot of questions tonight about, about stipends, about people showing up, about missed calls. I, I think we should give him time to prepare an overview of the fire department, and if there's anything in particular you'd like to see. So that's...
As a follow-up question to Trustee Weisenberg, I'm concerned, you know, this has been a great discussion and a needed discussion, and I think that we're all coming to terms with realizing that we shouldn't be hiring three full-time paid positions immediately. But I'm also concerned with the parallel track with our hiring process. And if, I mean, are we suggesting we're going to have another conversation? Are we suggesting that we're putting this on the next board meeting as an action item? What is your, what were you thinking?
I was thinking we would, it would be on Tuesday as an action item to make it determine, I don't know how it needs to be worded, on what we've already passed versus hiring the three employees. But to put a pause on that, I thought we would take whatever action we needed to take on Tuesday to do that.
Because as Trustee Weisenberg said, we've already given a green light for instruction. I think we need to...
You'd have to rescind that.
There, there was a resolution authorizing the hire of three full-time firefighters. That resolution would have to be rescinded.
That would be, require a three-fourth vote, I think, wouldn't it?
It would.
Clerk Turner, did you ever, those numbers?
Yes.
Because on the budget that I have, that for the salaries for the full-time chief and three firefighters, we had $389,000. But then we only had $195 for stipends.
Yes, okay.
So even if we cut the salaries in half, we'd be bumping the volunteer contributions up. It would wash.
So the, the thing to note about that budget was that was at a time prior to the board establishing what the pay rate for the firefighters would be. So already, that particular rate that is in the budget is not correct.
Okay. It went down, didn't it?
It went up.
I thought it went from like 85 to 68 something?
No, the figure that was in the budget that was passed was $55,000. So to answer your question, for one year, my current estimates have approximately 380 thou, or sorry, I'm sorry, 340,000. That's roughly salaries, benefits. There's a few things missing, but it's, it's close. The stipends alone, for one year, for one shift are, and this is at the increased rate, because I'm talking about '25, '26, I'm projecting about $165,000.
For that, for the stipends?
That's, for, that's one coverage for a year. So we would double...
That's $400 a day?
Yes. No, it's higher than that. Because this is next year, so I'm projecting there will be an increase to the stipend.
So it's $330,000.
Yeah, $330,000 for two people. So my, my concern is that even if we reduce the three full-time staff, financially, when it comes to the numbers...
So you're talking about...
Is it going to wash? Are we going to be in the same situation?
Yeah, it does improve things. You're talking about a reduction of 340, but an increase of 165. So the difference is going to be 175. That it's...
You're saving 175.
Thank you. Thank you. Too much math.
So I think as far as timeline, I, I do, I am concerned, because we have, I mean, I don't want to step in the, the Police and Fire Commission, they have their own timeline. But I, from what I understand from Counsel, is that timeline is becoming extremely short. And as, for fairness of the folks that have put themselves out, I think we as a board really need to determine what we want to do. So, you know, it's just, I don't think it's, it's fair to those people who've, you know, so I think we really, I mean, this is the table where we decide. So, you know, we need to get to...
Do you want something on the agenda then?
So, a follow-up question for Clerk Turner?
Yes.
So you said we'd have a savings of $175,000.
Approximately.
But we're running $344,000 deficit. So would you still be in a deficit?
So there are other things that I do not have the time to sit at this table and factor in, that I would like to go back and dial back if we are decreasing staff. So this is roughly counting payroll taxes. It's not factoring in health insurance at this point in time. It's not having any impact on the workers' comp or legal expenses. I would also dial back the, basically everything that's in that list of increases on the fire, I would be adjusting all of those expenses in some form or another. Would I adjust it to 100, the, the difference of what you just mentioned? I don't know. I'd need to sit and do the math.
Yeah, we need to get information and give you better answers. I mean, we've spent a lot of money on the commission, setting up the commission, legal fees to do that, and the hiring process. So there's been a lot of money added to the budget because of that.
Right, I agree.
But I want to give you the best answers we can give you, and let everyone digest this on administration and Chief Decker as well.
Right. My last point is that it costs money to provide fire service. So my concern is, is when everything's said and done, we may be spending just as much as we would normally for three employees.
I'm sorry, Trustee Weisenberg, I can't hear you.
My mic has failed me. Hello? I'll turn off Trustee Wigg. My concern was, is that...
You've got to leave, you've got to talk to it.
It costs money to provide fire service. So in fiscal year '26, '27, we're almost running a $500,000 deficit, $500,000 deficit. So I don't understand how, eliminating just the three positions, but adding the stipends, and we're only...
just the three positions, but adding the stipends, and we're only saving 175,000, how it wipes $500,000 off the red. Am I not making sense? I apologize if I'm not...
Dustin, are you there?
I think I heard it disconnect earlier, Mayor.
Okay.
Oh, no, maybe not. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay.
I can barely hear Trustee Weisenberg.
So, um, go ahead, you ask it, question, ask the question.
Not sure I even know now. Um, the question was, Chief Sutton...
In the microphone.
That, um, if we knocked, if we eliminated the three firefighter positions, how much were those a year? Uh, Clerk Turner?
Approximately $340,000.
$340,000? Um, we would still be in a deficit on the fiscal year '26, '27, and possibly '25, '26.
So you want to know how, how we're going to make up that deficit in those years?
Well, yeah. And if, if we do this, and we're potentially missing calls, obviously it's a, uh, smaller deficit, so that's a good thing.
So Dustin, I guess the, the question is, how, um, three paid versus staying with stipends, um, how does that, um, look fiscally?
I, I can barely hear you guys. You're broken up by my connection, uh, but it's more than...
Oh, now he's breaking.
Well, let, let me just step in again. These are really big decisions, and, yes, or, I, I really would encourage us, let's deep, let's plan on staying a long time next Tuesday night. Um, Chief, are you able to give us a, a written, um, some written, uh, reports?
Absolutely. I'll see if I can, uh, just committed to doing, I'll see if I can get somebody else to cover, uh, the flight, but, uh, I absolutely can provide you anything you...
I wouldn't want you to miss that. That's a pretty big...
Right. Thank you.
Wait, just to be clear, so we are saying we are not going to put this as an action item on next Tuesday's meeting?
My... I'll set the agenda Thursday.
I think it should be... I think it should be an action item. I am in favor of...
My, my...
Before we have the information?
My fear is, I, I, I don't want to answer this conclusively, but my fear is, right now, we do have a resolution authorizing to hire three full-time firefighters, and the Police and Fire Commission is well on the way. When is the response date for the, um, September 4th?
And the meeting is the 3rd.
So on September 4th is the deadline for preference points. I don't want to get into a, a description of that, but that's the last step before hiring. And, um, so theoretically, the Police and Fire Commission could meet anytime after September 4th to make the hiring decision. So I...
I feel strongly that we need some kind of action item on the next meeting's agenda.
Okay. I don't set the agenda, but I just, I, I do feel like if we don't have that on the next agenda, it's possible you're going to have three full-time firefighters.
Just from a procedural perspective.
Correct.
Then we can have a conversation about what a new, um, you know, formula, system, whatever, looks like. But that is something that Chief Decker is obviously going to advise us on and give us information about. But we, we need to, like, take, we need to do procedural, we need to act, I think, next, at the next meeting.
It would need to be a, a resolution to rescind the previous action of the board to hire three FTEs.
That's correct.
Instead of eliminating all three positions, it would be better to, baby steps, cut it back to like one or two. I mean, we save, I mean, you'd save something. And that way we could, we could at least move forward, we get some, and we start off, we get a, we get a professional firefighter in here, and we can slowly build up. I mean, we're, we're just dragging, we make a few steps forward, and we're falling back. We need to get this fire department going. And if we can just pull back, say, one or two of those positions, and then, you know, you got the stipends, I, I just don't want to, uh, not continue on with this. And I'm not in favor of eliminating it altogether.
Thank you, Trustee Gett. I'm going to step in there. Chief, you've heard the concerns of the board, um, so I'm going to ask you to think about other potential solutions, if there are. You know, again, I think we want you to make the, the best recommendations to get people to residence in an emergency. So, um, I'm going to ask you to, to do that, and I know you'll field calls and maybe meetings from board members. Um, and at this point, I'm going to ask Trustee Gett for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Signifying by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?